Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, no, excuse me, January 11th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan, Labange, Ledo, Miskowski Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, colleagues, this being Tuesday, as is customary, we have our Salute to the Flag scheduled. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Reyes for the introduction of a very special guest
Colleagues, I want to introduce my son, Angel. Today is his birthday. I asked him what he wanted today, and he wanted to join me at school. So I asked him if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask, Mr. Reyes, can I ask Angel a question? I understand it's not only your birthday today, is it somebody else's birthday too? Madam Clerk, first, order of business, please. Ms. Weiss moves, and Ms. Miskowski seconds.
Ms. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's
Before getting to general public comment, let's go through the agenda dispensed with consent items, and then we do have one commissioner to confirm who is on a calendar to make a So we'll take that item out of order, and as the first item after dispensing the consent items, then we'll come back to general public comment.
Okay, on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items one through five are street lighting districts, and council may open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to February 1st.
Members, items one through five now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council, these items, public hearings are open, and without objection, these matters are continued to February 1st.
Next items are six and seven, and those are hearings on Merchant BIDs, Little Tokyo BID, and Wilshire Center BID, and the final hearing on those matters will be February
Members, items six and seven now before us, and again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, public hearings are open Any requests to call these items special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Those are approved, next items.
Next items are item, excuse me, item number eight is a finding of public convenience or necessity, and that's in Council District Two, a motion is required to grant or deny
On the table for just a moment, I have a few questions.
Ms. Grohl calls that special, and let me also recognize there are no speaker cards on that item, so public hearing is open and closed.
Next item is item number nine, and that is also a public hearing item, the applicant consents to a continuance to January 25th.
Any objection, members, to continuing item number nine? Your hearing date is January 25th, two weeks from today.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 10 through 20, item number 10 is confirmation of a commissioner that was held in committee this morning, and the committee report is, has not been distributed yet.
The total 10 temporarily on the desk, we'll take that item up first, leaving items The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, LeBange, Lethal, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, Sois, Sign, Padilla, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, colleagues, this being Tuesday, as is customary, we have our Salute to the Flag scheduled. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Reyes for the introduction of a very special guest with us this morning.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I just want to introduce my son, Angel. Today is his birthday. I asked him what he wanted today, and he wanted to join me at a school. So I'll ask him if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everybody, please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Mr. Reyes, can I ask Angel a question? I understand it's not only your birthday today, is it somebody else's birthday too?
Yeah.
Whose is it?
My dad's.
Happy birthday. Going to work on your birthday. What a present. Madam Clerk, first, order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves, Ms. Grohl seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Ms. Miskowski seconds.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Before getting to general public comment, let's go through the agenda dispensed with consent items, and then we do have one commissioner to confirm who's on a calendar to make a commission meeting. So we'll take that item out of order, and as the first item after dispensing the consent items, then we'll come back to general public comment.
Okay, on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items one through five are street lighting districts, and council may open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to February 1st.
Members, items one through five now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, public hearings are open, and without objection, these matters are continued to February 1st. Next item, please.
Next items are six and seven, and those are hearings on merchant BIDs, Little Tokyo BID, and Wilshire Center BID, and the final hearing on those matters will be February 15th.
Members, items six and seven now before us, and again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, public hearings are open and closed. Any requests to call these items special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved, next items?
Next items are item, excuse me, item number eight is a finding of public convenience or necessity, and that's in Council District Two, a motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Ms. Grohl.
On the table for just a moment, I have a few questions.
Ms. Grohl calls that special. And let me also recognize there are no speaker cards on that item, so public hearing is open and closed. Next item, please.
Next item is item number nine, and that is also a public hearing item, the applicant consents to a continuance to January 25th.
Any objection, members, to continuing item number nine? Seeing none. New hearing date is January 25th, two weeks from today. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 10 through 20. Item number 10 is confirmation of a commissioner that was held in committee this morning, and the committee report is, has not been distributed yet.
The total 10 temporarily on the desk, we'll take that item up first, leaving items 11 through 20. Public hearings have been held on these items in committee, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any specials? Mr. Cardenas?
Item number 14, special.
14, call special by Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Miskowski.
Item 11.
11, call special by Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Grohl.
Item number 12 and item number 16, please.
12 and 16, call special by Ms. Grohl. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 21 through 44, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, the items 21 through 44 are before the City Council today, and I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on these items, public hearings are open and closed. Any requests for specials? Ms. Perry? 41. Call special by Ms. Perry, Mr. Garcetti. Also, item 41. 21 through 44, 41 has been called special, any other specials? 42, call special by Ms. Miskowski. Any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved, item 21 is inordinate and carries over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Next item on the supplemental agenda, item number 45 is also an item for which public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
And without objection, item 45 is before us, I do not have speaker cards on item 45, public hearing is open and closed, and Mr. LeBange calls item 45 special. And if that's the end of our agenda, let's return to item 10, take that item out of order, Mr. Cardenas.
I'd like to ask that we go back to item number 15, so I can call it special.
Okay, that's previously been approved, so let's open the roll in reconsideration of item 15, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item 15 is reconsidered and called special, Ms. Grohl.
Yes, Mr. Padilla, I think we have determined that we're going to have item number 16 be continued one week, and so I wanted to do that so people wouldn't stay around, that we would continue it one week for some further discussions.
Any objection to continuing item 16? Seeing none. Item 16 is continued one week, that new hearing date is January 18th. Okay, anything else before coming back to item number 10? If not, then let's move on to item number 10, Mr. Simons, if you could come forward, please, and let me recognize Mr. Cardenas.
Good morning, Mr. Simons, how are you doing today?
Good morning, thank you, good, thank you.
I think it's important for the public to note the service that Mr. Simons has given the city of Los Angeles. He was appointed most recently to fulfill a vacancy at the MWD, which is a very important authority that has to do with water. Even though it's raining a lot lately, that's really not the water that we're talking about. We're talking about the water that comes through our spout, the water that we use every day to make sure that our economy and our homes, and we do have the livelihood that we, that any society depends on, and water is critical. The Department, the MWD is some, is an organization that does have an appointment of the city of Los Angeles, and Mr. Simons has been representing us very diligently and with great effort. As a matter of fact, he's probably the most consistent appointee when it comes to coming to those meetings of anybody who's represented the city in many, many years. So I think it's important that the public understand what Mr. Simons' commitment has been. He's a very successful individual, his time is very valuable, but his commitment to the city is tremendous, and his willingness to give of his precious time, and matter of fact, he's kind of anxious right now because he wants to get over to an MWD meeting. Now, that's the kind of commitment that we receive from many of our appointments. I just wanted to say today, I'm very pleased to have gotten to know you as well, and to also recommend your appointment that just came through our committee this morning. So with that, I'd like to ask you a question, if you could enlighten the people of Los Angeles, maybe for a minute or two, about the kinds of issues that are facing us that the MWD tackles, and the kinds of things that we have to, we should be aware of, because these issues are very critical to us in Los Angeles.
First off, thank you for that awesome introduction. It's a humongous honor to serve, and when I first started, I thought I knew a lot about water, and in my first six months there, I realized that there's not just more to learn about the complications surrounding water, but that MWD in particular is a ferociously political environment, and our city has billions and billions of dollars invested in infrastructure. And we're basically designed, MWD, to provide a reliable source of quality water, supplemental water for all of Southern California, for all six counties. But representing our interests, sounds like it should be easy, but it's not. Managing the many attempts that the different agencies have to cost shift has been something that is both exciting and rewarding, because we're winning that battle, and I'm just having a lot of fun, and it's been a real honor, thank you.
So when you mentioned cost shifting, if we don't win that battle, as you described it, it could actually cost the people who use water here in our city more money, or more inconvenience, or what have you, could those kinds of things occur?
Oh, absolutely, in a major, major way. We just reaffirmed the rate structure integrity last meeting, which is being attacked by San Diego and other members, and we need to keep that rate structure firm, because they would like to shift off the costs on us and lower their costs, and that's not right or fair.
So basically, you're dealing with issues that, for example, constituents in San Diego, for example, when they turn on their spout, they actually would like to gain an advantage where they would actually receive a benefit that we would be paying for if, in fact, they were to win that battle you just described.
Absolutely, I mean, in a nutshell, they draw their water off the Colorado River Aqueduct, and they would love to just pay for the water that is wheeled from Colorado River down to them. They don't want to pay for the rest of the infrastructure that, that provides our water. And we basically charge on a postage stamp, which is, you know, everyone's paying the same, and that's what it should be.
Okay, well, when you were here before us, I mentioned to you that you were getting involved in an issue that's going to be exciting and different, and something like you've never seen before. Actually, a very noted American, Mark Twain, actually said that, what is it, whiskeys for drinking and waters for fighting over, or something like that.
That's actually it, and that's absolutely true.
You've come to understand and respect that statement that he made, correct?
The amount of emotion and emotional hostility behind all of these issues is just jaw-dropping.
Okay, and also, all joking aside, the issues that you're dealing with at the MWD amount to hundreds of millions of dollars a month, overall, the scope and the responsibility and the magnitude, billions of dollars a year, and over generations, trillions of dollars of just the water cost, but also, it is truly the lifeblood of the economy of Southern California. So thank you so much for your service, and also, thank you so much for being so diligent and giving of your precious time, and being the most diligent member we've had appointed to the MWD in many, many years, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss, followed by Mr. LeBange and Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, appreciate that, and I want to congratulate you on what is going to be a unanimous vote, and, and really thank you for giving four more years of your life in service, because you don't have to, you have a very, very busy professional life already, and a very successful one at that, and what, and I could be wrong, but I think you might be the most qualified person to serve on the MWD, because you have a rather unusual family background that puts you squarely in the water world in a way which really no one I've ever met is, and I don't, I don't want to embarrass you, you know, in any way, but I think it might be useful for my colleagues to hear a little bit about why it is you know so much about water, because oftentimes, appointments get criticized, and I think people need to understand that here is one where truly we could not find a more qualified person.
Thank you. Well, I was born in Los Angeles, spent my first few years in Los Angeles, and then raised in Arizona, and in Arizona, my family business is, we provide a large bulk of the water to metropolitan Phoenix. So that's essentially the family business, and like any good son, you try to run away from your father's business and try to become your own man, which is why I came back to where I was born, Los Angeles, and started out as a movie producer. But what I've found is that the older I get, the more the stuff that's literally in my blood interests me, and it's been, it's been a really wonderful homecoming, getting involved in California water issues.
Well, I'm glad that you could be lured back into the, the public side of the family business, and I wish you another four years of success on the board.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So, Mr. Simons, basically, you were trying to leave the family business, but they kept holding you back in.
Something like that.
Mr. LeBange.
Mr. Simons, thank you, and Mr. Cardenas, thank you, because your remarks, and I remember when you first joined this council, how strong you were about our water interest and the MWD in San Diego, and educating us about the issues there, which is so important, as you chaired that very important committee for the council, I just wanted to thank you. But Director, I want to thank you, because as Tony said, you not only inspire us, you inspire the staff, both at MWD and Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, which was the original member to help form this very important agency for Southern California. So I thank you for that inspiration, I just hope you continue the public outcry for issues related to water, because there's such an important need, as Tony mentioned, the lifeblood, and so important to all of us. One question I want to ask you about desalinization, because I've been to the plant out in El Segundo, Manhattan Beach area, and tell me what MWD is doing about desalinization.
We're actually involved in a number of different attempts at DSal. We're partnering up with DWP, which is strange, I say "we're" partnering up, even though I'm sort of DWP's rep.
Right.
Over at Scattergood, and we're talking with Carlsbad about building one down there. You know, it's, it's, we see DSal as an integral part of California's supplemental water future. It's a drought-resistant form of water, and it's, it's one of those things where, you know, it's interesting, because what I found very interesting is that the environmentalists, some environmentalists are saying, we're not, we're not big believers in DSal, because that could spawn unlimited growth, because you'd have an unlimited supply of water. But I think for a very small portion of our supplemental water, it could be very, very important.
Right.
And, and, you know, as the costs of filtration come down, it does start to become more and more economically feasible.
Right, well, yeah, it's so important. Everybody needs water, and including the call in the West, back from Nevada, from Colorado, from Arizona especially, and Mexico too, because of all the needs for the Colorado and the water that's come there, so I think it's important to work on that aspect to be able to do it right. I just wanted to thank you for your service, and appreciate your inspiration.
Thank you.
Water is so important, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. LeBange, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, first I want to thank you for your hard work and your commitment to the city. MWD, of course, has a vast array of programs. When you look at the challenge we have before us in trying to bring back the Alamo River back to life, can you just give me some examples of some stormwater harvesting technologically, examples of how we can work together, MWD, DWP, and the city to achieve these goals? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to get a feel for what vision you see, what potential, given all the resources and capacity of MWD.
Well, it's interesting, so far, I believe that DWP and its reps, which is us, are very effectively managing the metropolitan system. Could you be a little bit more specific, I really want to answer the question.
As you know, we're looking at how we can put natural habitats, looking at what they did at Salado River over in, in Arizona, Tempe, how they put the rubber dams in to create waterfront districts, and they combine the stormwater harvesting technology along with land use, along with creating waterfront, artificial lakes.
Sure.
And in the process, you're cleaning the riverway as it's, before it hits the ocean, you're creating opportunities for the local neighborhoods. That's, that's the kind of feel I want to get from you.
Okay, well, I think, I think one of the most impressive things that MWD has done in the last couple of years is finish Diamond Valley Lake, which is an 800,000 acre foot water reservoir out near Hemet, and what it's basically designed to do is supply a sort of emergency supply of water for the service area, which includes us, in case there were a breakdown in the system due to an earthquake or something like that, and that should, that would give us about six months of supply, which, which would be really, really good. And we were able to build this gigantic reservoir by buying up a lot of the land, and the land around it, we've turned into parkland, and there's a recreation program going on out there, and we're trying to use that as a model all over the place, but one of the things that Metropolitan has been very, very good at is, you know, despite the drought, we are in good shape, we do have, particularly our city, we do have redundancy in our supply, so.
Fantastic. Again, as we go through the process of being opportunistic with our water systems, with our technology, I'd like for us to see us go in a direction where we start cleaning up our brownfield conditions along the riverway, to bring back to life these parcels that have been abandoned because of their contamination. And when you look at aquatic architecture, when you look at stormwater harvesting technology, when you look at our natural habitats as a tool, as a method, as an approach to clean up these brownfield conditions, I believe we can start stimulating our economy, because now we're creating new places for investment for ecological purposes, as well as economic development and social improvement of these different environments that have been neglected for so long. So that's, I'm rather ambitious in that regard, but I want to see us move in that direction, I hope with your leadership.
I will tend to that.
Keep pushing MWD in that direction.
Thank you, I will tend to that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, our next speaker is Ms. Grohl.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and it's nice to see you, you said it seemed like just yesterday that you were sitting at that table, and we've had a chance to break bread and talk about the importance of our water systems and the coordination, and through Councilmember Cardenas's committee, the importance, we particularly are aware of it in the last week in the city of Los Angeles, the power of water, literally and figuratively here in the city of Los Angeles, and so, one thing I would be interested in is the MWD looks at the impact of the last week's rain, and the impact on its systems, and et cetera, I think that I would be interested in hearing back from MWD, and maybe it's through Tony's committee, to just get a report about the impact. I know that Councilmember Miskowski, Mr. Weiss, and myself introduced a Rule 23 today to particularly ask about how, from our city family here, and the impacts, but I think that would be something interesting for us to know, impacts on MWD, if there were, you know, any or not.
If you'd like, I can get you, I'll get you a report on that.
That'd be great.
I mean, it has been helpful, but not as helpful as people would think, I mean, we've actually made great strides in conservation, and this much water helps with the ground table, the groundwater table. The problem is, our system isn't designed to catch runoff, and it's a bit like trying to fill up a bucket from a fire hose.
Right.
There's a tremendous amount of runoff going into the ocean. The snowmelt will help, but I can get you a report on that, and I'll follow up.
And I do believe, as you mentioned, that conservation has been so critical, oftentimes, residents say, oh, we had all that rain, we don't need to conserve as much, all those conservation measures that we've had, and so, it may be time again to look at reminding our constituents about the importance of conservation, even though we had this tremendous rain. So I just want to thank you, as well as all my colleagues have, for your time and commitment.
Thank you.
I know that it has been extensive, and with your other busy, busy life, your real job, as they say, but pleased to have you again serve as the representative of MWD, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay, that closes our comments, thanks again for offering yourself for service, let's open the roll in renomination, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations, you're appointed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. We've had a request, colleagues, if there's no objection, to take Special 1 out of order, and just before public comment, which we'll go to next, it's a special motion dealing with the flooding, if we can hear from the city attorney on the findings, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, I recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the
consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the city has been hit with record rainfall. Immediate action is required so that the various departments and bureaus can publicize their actions to help residents recover from these storms. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay. On the findings, colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. That item is before us. Ms. Sikowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to invite our city public agencies, public response agencies to the front table to give us a report. Members, as we have seen, watching the news over the last lot, number of days, and particularly over this, this last weekend, we have been inundated with record rainfalls in this Southern California region. And because our agencies know what to do and know how to handle this, they have activated the Emergency Operations Center. And I thought it'd be worthwhile, not only for this council to be informed, but for our members of the public to be informed about what the city agencies are doing, what the kind of response teams that they have set up to go out and look at not only calls from council offices, but calls from constituents. They are very familiar themselves with some of the trouble spots. We have seen, I think, in every district barricades set up on roads, which have been set up as a consequence of gushing running water, trees down, and the like. So I asked Mr. Stanley and again, our city response team agencies to be here to talk about what they've set up, what kind of information they can give us to help disseminate to our constituents. Because although we all saw the sun today, we are just still in the very early stages of our rainy season. And with the waters, as we have seen, and our soils having been saturated, particularly in our canyons and hillside, we need to know what to do, what kind of response is being prepared. And I would like to hear from the agencies at the table specifically, not only in terms of the kind of response you're getting, what kind of teamwork has been set up. And then more specifically, as we might have some time of respite with the sunshine, do we have the capability to go out and clean some of the storm drains, the debris basins, and the like, which are doing their job to hold the debris from the hillsides that is falling. But once they get filled, there can be problems too. So are we able to go in and identify the debris basins that need to be emptied and cleaned out now to take more capacity if more is yet to come? So I would like to turn it over to Mr. Stanley to introduce those to the table and hear briefly from the city agencies what we can do, whether or not there are any emergency numbers that we can help disseminate, what we are doing relative to sandbags and giving information to our constituents to help them protect themselves and availing themselves to the city services that are out there.
I believe, just, we've got a couple of requests. Is this to piggyback on to Ms. Sikowski's questions, I assume? Mr. Weiss, first?
And I'm, I'm very pleased to have discussed this with Ms. Sikowski yesterday and have presented this motion with her this morning. I don't know how you all felt when you woke up this morning, but when, when I woke up and I saw the sun, I didn't quite believe it. My kids didn't believe it because Yahoo Weather was still telling them that it was going to rain today. And at about 4:30 this morning, I heard a helicopter over my house and immediately turned on the news because I thought it must have meant that maybe a house had gone down in my neighborhood. Fortunately, it was just a traffic helicopter. But there's a lot of concern out there. I know at the same time, there's a lot of tremendous appreciation for the hard work of the men and women of all of your departments, what you've done with the resources that you have in the last few days to cope with the disasters out there. So we look forward to your presentation and look forward to working with you in the coming days and weeks to try to set this city right.
I know that there are others. I want to respect the two makers of the motion. If we can just...
I'm not making any comments, but I'd like to ask Water Power, the most important agency, to join the table.
Okay. If there's a representative from Water and Power.
Someone from Water and Power who could join?
A seat coming over as well?
Yeah, they're right there.
Okay.
Street Services too.
Take that first.
Street Services too.
Match of answers. Mr. Stanley?
Ellis Stanley, General Manager for the Emergency Preparedness Department. Ms. Sikowski, thank you very much for this motion. At 0600 on Friday, the city activated the Emergency Operations Center. I think it's important to, for the council members and everyone to understand that we don't just respond. We, it is important that we look at mitigation, how can we get out in front of potential hazards and mitigate them. And unfortunately, when you mitigate things and you don't see things happening, many times you fail to appreciate how much work has gone into causing those things not to happen. And usually, we're talking about bad things, making sure that we protect lives and protect property. You've seen in this whole effort, a first responder that looks gray as a, I mean, purple, I think is a military term, when you see not just fire, not just police, but you see Department of Transportation, you see Public Works and all forms of Public Works, you see the engineering, you see all of our departments working together to make sure that the city remains safe. One of the things we also have to be very cognizant of is that we don't do this alone. There's a lot of liaising with other departments, whether it's the Corps of Engineers, whether it's the American Red Cross, whether it's LAUSD schools, or any of the people and resources that we need to bring to bear to make sure that this is a safe place to live and that we're protecting the residents and we're protecting the responders out there. And as far as teamwork, this has been an example of some of the best teamwork we can have. This effort has been led, and the way we operate, it's been led by the Fire Department. That's for obvious reasons. This has been a flood. We've had incidents where we have to deal with life safety and the Fire Department has taken a lead on that. At the table today, we have Street Services from Public Works, we have Department of Water and Power, we have Department of Transportation, Engineering, Building and Safety, Sanitation, as well as the Fire Department. That's what you see before you and there's still a lot of people back in the EOC continuing to work. And I would ask and turn it over to the Chief of Mantra with the Fire Department to kind of give you an overview and update of where we are today.
Thank you, Ellis. Councilmembers, I just want to reiterate, there's really a difference that you see in the response that we had these past week from prior EOC activations. And I think that's in the case that we actually initiated the activation on Friday when it wasn't raining heavy because of the reports of the incoming storms. The recognition, I think, as Councilmember Ms. Sikowski stated, that the normal average rainfall in the city of Los Angeles is a little over 15 inches, 15.15 inches. Last week, we were at saturation prior to the storms, which they consider to be 13 inches. In a very short period of time, the city reached 21 inches and we're only halfway through the year. So the, the concern that we were facing is, is that the ground was at its saturation point and we had a series of three storms coming in that were predicting another three to six inches in the low lying areas and anywhere from four to eight inches in the higher lying areas. So what we decided to do was initiate activation of the EOC, get the departments queued up, try to put together the team effort, which has been building through the past experiences and the conferences that we've gone to specifically to try to get into a preventative mode rather than into a reactionary and response mode. We were able to do that by adding additional companies on the part of the Fire Department. What I'll do is just highlight some of the areas that we've been responding to and then I'll let the individual departments respond to your specific questions about ongoing closures. The thing that I might add is there is still a concern, now even though the rain has stopped, that what we'll start to see is more of the problems that you've seen being experienced outside of Los Angeles. Very tragic landslide up in La Conchita where we currently have one of our USAR companies up there. That is still a danger here in the city. And Gary is going to show you some pictures in a little bit that'll highlight some of the problem areas that we've had. Fortunately, we've been able to stay ahead of most of these things and have resources in place to minimize the impact. That's not to say that we don't have problematic street closures, thorough fears, I know in many of your districts, the problems with what was ongoing at the 405 freeway, Laurel Canyon, Coldwater Canyon, the problems we've been having along Mulholland. There are significant closures that we have been dealt with and we're in the process of trying to get those open. One of the things that I want to add, what we initiated yesterday, again, through a team effort, is to put assessment teams out to take an assessment of where we are. Whenever the rain let up, we sent the assessment teams out to determine what could be done proactively to prepare for the next storm coming in. Currently, we have assessed, six assessment teams out and these are made up of a Fire Inspector, a Bureau of Engineering, a geotechnical person, as well as Building and Safety. Did I miss anybody else? I think that's the three teams. We've got six teams out there. One team is in the Pacific Palisades area. These are all areas that historically have been problematic when we have heavy rains. Team two is in the Mulholland Drive area from the 101 freeway west to 405. Team three is in the canyons on the south side of Mulholland, involved in some of the Mandeville Canyon area. Team four is out in the canyons on the north side of Mulholland. Team five is in the Hollywood Hills between Coldwater and Laurel Canyon. And Team six is in the Mount Washington, Montecito Drive area. Again, they're not just looking at specific problems, but they're trying to do a general survey, windshield survey of what might be problem areas in an effort to be proactively mitigating some of those before they become problematic to traffic. Additionally, today, we finally had the clearance to be able to get the helicopters up. We've got three Fire Department helicopters doing an aerial survey to see if there are any other things that need to be addressed, again, prior to having any life threatening situations developed. We've been very fortunate. We've had the one loss of life in the Elysian Park area, which was a gentleman that was living in the park that got caught in a mudslide there. We had the situation of the house collapsing on Laurel Canyon. Fortunately, there were no fatalities associated with that. So so far, we've been able to stay ahead of some of these problem areas. We've taken some proactive measures for evacuation. I know Councilmember Tom Labange had an incident in his neighborhood on the street. We've been fortunate, again, there's been severe damage, property damage, but no life loss in those situations. Just to give you a quick snapshot overview, the hazards we've been dealing with is certainly the significant rain causing street closures. We've been monitoring the Sepulveda Basin very aggressively with the Army Corps of Engineers and they have been able to manage the buildup of water, make the releases when it's not raining. And that is, again, an ongoing situation that is manageable. Coldwater Canyon was closed. We're in the process of trying to get that open now. Laurel Canyon was closed and is open again. Again, there are ongoing issues that we're, street maintenance is dealing with to keep those roads open. Ongoing slide problems in the Palisades Bowl area. The Big Tiora Vista Bridge was isolated. That's one of the issues we were, have been dealing with. Tahunga Dam, they release water there, which actually isolates some city residents. What we needed to do was move one of our engine companies in a paramedic ambulance that literally for two days were isolated in that area. Were able to address that now and to get relief up into that area, but we were able to cover the services there during that time that they were releasing flood from the Tahunga dams. City reservoirs are fine. DWP can address any issues around that. The flood control systems, another area where there's been extreme runoff and in many cases it's undermined some of the adjacent roads. We have been actively monitoring those and as well as the problem areas. The Telford-San Fernando Road is the lake that normally develops there during the rain and that area has been closed off. As far as power, and DWP can address that specifically, my understanding, we have about 550 homes that are still without power in the metro area, but they're actively pursuing getting those powers back. No problems in the landfills that we're dealing with. Sanitation is actively dealing with issues around sewage pumping and keeping the, those and they've had 16 pump trucks out working continuously over the course of the last few days. School closures. Most of this information comes from LA Unified, but it impacts our residences. Woodman, which is in the Topanga Canyon outside the city area, but has students from the city attending school there, and the Wonderland School up in the Laurel Canyon area are two schools that remain closed. Again, I'll let the individual departments talk about their operational capacities. As far as mutual aid, we have our USAR team out with another Fire Department Task Force in the La Conchita issue that's been ongoing last night and today. The Police Department is operating within their normal limits. All departments are meeting the request for service. And again, we're trying to act in a preemptive way in staging resources on the part of the, specifically on the Fire Department. We have opened additional companies by calling back staffing. We have eight additional ambulances in service. About 14 additional fire engines went into service yesterday. We've scaled that back today. We've put one additional urban search and rescue rig into operation. And we've pre-deployed a number of companies and many of those you may have seen in your district. We moved 10 companies up yesterday into the Mulholland corridor along the four fire stations there. Four Swiftwater rescue teams have been deployed throughout the four day period. Nine additional brush patrols, which give us better access into some of the areas, have been on a constant patrol. And we've added back one additional staffing for one additional helicopter. Again, we've tried to get the public service announcements out there and the one that you'll see coming out later today is a request on the part of, of the EOC, the city family, to have residents survey their property now that the rain has stopped. If they have a question about stability or they anticipate any problems, to call us now so that we can get teams out there to do an assessment and to hopefully avoid life threatening situations by doing some mitigation efforts in the meantime. And those PSAs will be ongoing. There are sandbags continually available at all fire stations and Street Services has been supporting that, working their people on overtime around the clock, delivering sand to various areas and keeping their yards open. So on, on, on the whole, the initial and early activation of the EOC was very proactive in getting the city teams together so that we could respond as a city unit to the individual problems that departments were having. I'd like to emphasize, it's my feeling we need to keep the Emergency Operations Center open at least during business hours, which doesn't incur additional overtime costs on the, at least the next couple of days until we can get the strong assessments done and good information back from the assessment teams as they're out and about. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Gary if he wants to highlight those four areas.
Before we get to Gary also, you may notice that you will hear later on the data, the county of Los Angeles has asked for a declaration of a local emergency and they're going to the state for a declaration. A couple of the cities within LA County has. A couple of reasons that you would ask for a declaration. One, just for the tracking and reimbursement of incurred costs by the county doing so. We have that avenue. The other is you become overwhelmed in your capability to respond. And we have not, at this point, become overwhelmed. We've got a lot of people working very diligently. And you'd ask about information out. We continue to push to one call to City Hall to make sure folks get into 311, get that information. They have all of the information on how people can get assistance. Gary?
Good morning. Gary Moore, City Engineer. I just want to echo what the chief said in the extreme cooperation that we've all received, especially working with the Fire Department and Street Services. Today, I'd like to show you five locations that are, I think, typical of what we're seeing out there. Go right ahead and jump into it. Over in the Montecito area, where we have a lot of retaining walls that were built in the 1930s, they don't have a lot of reinforcement and this happened at the end of December, falling on cars in that area. We see a lot of that in the, this area. Up in Coldwater Canyon, this is actually at Mulholland Drive there. You can see where Mulholland used to have a curb in this area. The water has gotten into the cracks, it's caused the sloughing and it's come down on Coldwater Canyon. This is an area that Mulholland is currently closed. Working with Street Services and the Fire Department right now to assess how best we're going to be able to open Mulholland Drive and Coldwater. It appears that this area here will need a substantial repair or possible bulkhead to be built for that situation. This is called the Asilamar area down in the Pacific Palisades area. This is a trailer park area. The state of California actually is responsible for the, the area itself. However, once again, the city's been very proactive and our geologists have been monitoring this area. And we saw a slippage of about three feet over the weekend and we were immediately in contact with our EOC, the LA Department, Police Department, to contact the state to make sure that they were out there to assess whether evacuations were necessary. These are our residents and we want to be proactive. Here's another situation where we had a private contractor who was doing construction out in Latuna Canyon and had temporary... out in Latuna Canyon and had temporary wood, plywood, which, when this type of storm just washed that right away. We've gone in and instructed the contractor to fill that in with slurry to get through these storm situations and to alleviate any additional damage. And one last slide I have for you here is Coldcrest. This is in the west of Laurel Canyon here. It's a one-lane road, as you can see, has been washed away, and that's going to be closed for a little while as we go ahead and assess how best to get that road back into service. And that's a very brief view of things we're seeing out there.
James Ogizaki from the Department of Transportation. We still have street closures. As far as I know, at this time, we have about 16 street closures throughout the city. Most of them are in the San Fernando Valley, as you know. We do have traffic officers helping with a traffic situation. We have 50 officers at this time deployed at various sites throughout the city with detours and with the street closures, making sure that people don't go through these areas. We still have some power failures in some areas, and I understand the signals are flashing at about a dozen locations and possible lights all out at 40 locations, and we're working with DWP to restore those signals. Other than that, the freeway seems to be moving okay, and all the Metro Rail and the MetroLink systems is operating. So, the transportation-wise, I think generally is pretty good. As I said, we're continuing to monitor. We're working with LAPD, where they told, they asked us to take a look at several locations where they think maybe we could open it up. We want to make sure, checking with the Bureau of Engineering that there is no further landslide before we open up some of these, but we'll coordinate all of that. But we are looking at how we could remove the barricades and open up the streets as soon as possible in some of these street closures.
Good morning, council members. Henry Martinez, Chief Operating Officer for Power. I just want to report to you that the department's been diligently working, not only this last storm, but throughout the number of storms that we had, to restore power to the city and its residents. Our goal is to try to get our service back up again in a four-hour period, and whenever we're unable to meet that four-hour criteria, we start bringing more crews in. I'd like to tell you that over the weekend, we've had up to 50, I'm sorry, 66 crews out there. The normal crews that we had, we augmented with people that typically do other type of work in the electric system, brought them back in to respond to the emergencies and to restore power. We had roughly 58 to 5900 residents, 59,000 residents affected over the weekend, and the numbers are quite lower now. And although we restored power, there's a lot of temporary work that's been done out there. And our crews have got to go back out and restore permanently the temporary jumpers or systems that we have replaced. Our call centers are taking calls and they're responding as best they can, and again, responding to the critical areas first and deploying resources necessary to make sure that the systems get back up and running. On the water system, we have not heard of anything major dealing with the reservoirs at this point. We did have a landslide at Rotacasteak. This is our power, our pump storage plant up in the, up in the Sierra, I'm sorry, the Los Angeles National Forest. We had people stranded there for a period of time until the county came in and reopened the door, the road enough to get traffic through there. And also, we had some problems at San Francisco Canyon across from Power Plan Two. We have some residents there that we also had to respond to and make it safe for them. But the department continues to restore power as quickly as possible. Crews are working 24/7, and we're trying to get as much deployment of people as we can to restore the service.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. Bill Robertson, Bureau of Street Services. The Bureau has been responding since Friday night on 12-hour emergency shifts. We've had people out, averaging 63 crews for every 12-hour shift. We plan to continue that response through tomorrow morning at 6:00 a.m., at which time we will go back to our normal operating hours. As the chief mentioned, we plan to keep our BOC open through Friday. We will be running daylight hours, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., in our BOC as we identify some of the assessments and the cleanups required. But just to give you an idea of the type of things that we've been doing since the activation on Friday, the Bureau's received over 1,200 requests for services. We dispatched 608 emergency calls. We have a backlog now, 760 locations for pothole repair, 467 trees down, numerous intersections flooded, reports of mudslides, mud and debris in the street. We are responding to those around the clock. I would ask that you let your constituents know that our first job is to make the street passable so that fire and police have access in the event of an emergency. We've had numerous calls thinking that we've walked off and left mud and debris in the street. We're making them passable. We will be back. We're anticipating that we'll be on storm cleanup at minimum for the next 30 days as we get these locations cleaned up from our initial response, trying to make things passable again. Thank you.
Rita with sanitation? Rita Robertson, Bureau of Sanitation. The Bureau of Sanitation has been with the leadership of the mayor and council, on guard with wet weather programs and plans, and we even have a wet weather commander who operates in these instances. And the proactivity of the Bureau is working. Continuous cleaning of the storm drains, completion of ESIS, progress on NICE in the Eagle Rock Interceptor project, and exceptional operation of our wastewater plants has resulted in a 90% fewer spill since the El Nino storms of 1998. So, the Bureau of Sanitation has been very much on top of planning for such storms. But since this storm represents even greater rainfall than a 25-year storm, from what we were able to understand from all the meteorologists, there still remain some major concerns in the city in some areas that I'm sure you're concerned about yourselves, at the 110 freeway north at Avenue 57, Hollywood Hill, Eagle Rock area, and some places in Benedict Canyon. But even in those areas where we are on top of the situation, we have our trucks out there. We have, the city owns five trucks. We have contracted out to get, we have another 10. We also, this morning, got another six because in the whole Southern California region, there were not trucks available because everybody's asking for trucks. So, we tried to get some from Kern County, but they couldn't get over the grapevine to get to us. However, we have eased up with additional trucks, and wherever there's a problem, we've been sending our crews out. Our crews have been activated on emergency 12-hour shifts since December 26th in anticipation of these problems, which is one of the reasons we've been ahead of it. But it wasn't until Sunday morning, when, until Sunday, when we received so much rain in a concentrated period of time that some of the areas were oversaturated. The other areas that we have projects in place to fix, as you're aware, we're completing NICE, which should, in Eagle Rock Intercept area, which should help that area. We also have a project online with our partners here in engineering with regard to the Harbor Freeway project. And in fact, we'll be hearing that tomorrow in our program review committee for funding. We also know that with some of the problems we have in the city, that the good thing is, is that with ESIS, there were no spills in the south part of Los Angeles, and we are so very grateful for the fact that the forethought and the work of the Bureau has helped us in so many ways to have such, you know, to be on top of things, but also to be able to react and also proact to the kinds of things that we saw in the last couple of weeks in Los Angeles. We'll take, we have staff here that can answer any specific problems about your areas if you want to go into that much detail, but thank you very much.
Finally, building and safety.
Good morning, council members. Bob Steinbach, Department of Building and Safety. Since Friday and throughout the weekend, we've continued to receive calls for emergency storm-related inspections. As of this morning, about 7:00, we received over 110 requests for inspection. Six of those properties, and these are private properties, were red-tagged, 12 yellow-tagged, and the rest were green. A majority of what we're seeing is mud flow. Mostly surface materials, nothing really deep-seated as yet. We provided staff to the assessment teams that Chief Permatry described to you earlier, and will continue to do so as long as they're in operation. We have deployed great division inspection and engineering staff to the areas of the city that are known to be prone to slides. They went out first thing Friday and started looking and seeing if we could anticipate some problems, and we actually, in many cases, were. We remain available to assist any members of the public or any other departments as needed, and as the Emergency Operations Center dictates. We would like to remind the public, it's very, very important that if you are concerned about any slide potentials or potential damage to your property or damage that has already occurred, to contact us either through our 888-LA for build number or 311, or contract, contact a licensed contractor or geotechnical engineer to make that assessment. Thank you.
One further, if folks need to, want to go online, they can go to Update LA and find out also about the street closures, et cetera. A lot of other departments is not around the table, LAPD, ITA, CONAD, and Public Works. Many of the departments have been working very hard and around the clock to make sure that LA remains one of the safest cities. Any questions?
Before turning to council members, we do have one speaker card submitted from Dr. Daniel Weisman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. If you think the freeways are all right, you should have tried the five this morning when I got on the road at 8:00 to try to be here for public comment and found out that the backside of Elysian Park was on the freeway and you couldn't get around the Pasadena cutoff to get down here. This was intended to be a comment in the public comment section earlier today, but since we're talking about chiefs and since we're talking right now...
Well, Mr. Weisman, we haven't had general public comment yet, so if you'd like to...
I understand that, and I'm about to speak to the issue at hand. Thank you, sir. The issue at hand is emergencies, and the issue at hand is emergencies that our police, our fire, and our other departments have to respond to. Now, I want to tell you that you have a new partner in this game, and they are the neighborhood councils. We've had three meetings, and I cannot commend highly enough Chief Permatry, Chief Fox, Chief McDonald, and last night, the CAO, Bill Fujioka, who have gone to three meetings that I know of, last Thursday, last Saturday, and last night. And at each of these meetings have informed 50 to more or more stakeholders in the community about the needs of the police and fire, and perhaps several ways now to meet these needs. But you're now faced, right now, in this issue with what do we do when we have a real widespread emergency? And I think this clearly points out that we do not have a real program. We do not have adequate funding. We do not have adequate staffing. We do not have adequate equipment of our various emergency departments to do this. And however we augment that, is in part going to be discussed by the Budget and Finance Committee in my neighborhood at Van Nuys this evening, and then brought to your Budget and Finance and Public Services Committee on Tuesday. The timeframe is very short, but the new player in this department is the neighborhood councils. These councils have now become more aware and can take a role in this and can serve the various departments in getting the word out to the communities and can get the word back to you. The more times that chiefs of departments take extra time, even in the time of emergency, as Chiefs Permatry and Fox and McDonald have done, to come out and talk to the neighborhood councils, the more active those neighborhood councils can be in helping this city do the things it needs to do. These neighborhood councils are now 85 in number, about 100 total when they're all there. When they really get rolling, you will have a much easier time of it, a much easier time in letting people know what we need to do. The emergency measures to augment police and fire are in process. We certainly need to take that to a higher level, especially as pointed out in the specific issue before you. Thank you very much for hearing me. I'm sorry I was not here on time. Let's blame the rain this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for this item. Turning to council discussion, I have on the cue Ms. Gruel, followed by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Labange, Ms. Zine, and Ms. Miskowski. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and a special thank you to all of you sitting at that table. I received numerous calls over the last several days from Emergency Operations Center, and particularly the fire department, on Saturday, I believe it was Saturday or Sunday, that we were beginning to release the water in the Tahunga Basin. And as Mr. Weisman is talking about their relationship with neighborhood councils, we called all the presidents of our neighborhood councils and other associations that same day to let them know because they are our eyes and ears and voices often in that area. And I saw many of those pictures were also in my district, and I think one of the most visual we've had in the city of Los Angeles was that home on Laurel Canyon, which literally just fell down the mountain, and they're very lucky to be alive, and the fire department got there so quickly. Another part of my district that was impacted greatly was in the Tahunga area, I know, which both the fire department and Street Services were up there in an area where a home has pretty much been red-tagged and is falling down the hill, and several people were evacuated in that area. Again, our departments were there. DWP, we got, I got an email complimenting how quickly DWP responded, so I want to say thank you as well to some of those areas. On Sunday night, I was on Ventura Boulevard, and both LAPD and DOT were out there when we had enormous power outage, the whole length of Ventura Boulevard. So, I think I want to thank Ms. Miskowski and Ms. Weiss and all of you for being here. On the ledge project, which was the one you also showed, I know people believe that's part of a private contractor's responsibility because the debris came from a construction site in which they were working, and the street. Could you just give me briefly a status report on that, Gary?
This was part of what we call a B permit, and what this means is that it's a private development, and a part of their requirements to build that new development is to put a storm drain system in, and they were building the storm drain system that will eventually become the ownership of the city. And the way they had blockaded the storm drain, they had used plywood. We've, we've asked, and they've complied, and they put in steel plates, and they put in what's, a concrete mixture filled it up to the top so that the water would flow properly down the street until the storms have come to, come to an end, and then we'll allow them to go back and complete construction.
From, Bill Robertson, from your perspective, again, we have had numerous calls, particularly in San La Tahunga, for streets that are dirt, that weren't paved before, who, that have become almost, you know, unable for people to drive on. From your perspective, as we prioritize the kinds of calls that we're getting in my office, what's the best way for us to communicate with you and those priorities? And I know your staff is going out to some locations, but where can we be the most helpful in listing those priorities?
I, I think Councilmember Gruel, probably the, right now with 311 still, still being, we're linked right now to 311, so any call that goes to 311 goes directly to our Bureau Operating Center. So, we, as long as we're in this response mode, anything that comes in through 311 will be looked at as an emergency. We are prioritizing those types of requests and then responding with our crews. Of course, naturally, any council member that has a direct concern can certainly call the Bureau directly. Most of you have my number. We're more than happy to respond and take a second look or even a third look at some locations. We experienced numerous calls for the same location throughout the storm because stuff just kept coming down. So, we were out there on many of them, Laurel Canyon. We had crews out there, I think, constantly around the clock because it was just the amount of rain and the mud and debris coming down was so great that every time we cleaned it up, it just came right back down. But 311 is still the, the best bet for individuals that feel they may have a request that our Bureau handles because it will go directly to the BOC and be handled as an emergency while we're in this response mode.
Great. Well, and we, one of the other incidences you mentioned, Chief Permatry, was the release of the water from the Tahunga Dam and the area in which had a number of homes that if the road had been taken out, where the water was coming down, your department was there. And thank you to Station 24 and 74's up there, who I know responded and were there in case there was any emergency. I'd like to see, as we go forward, if we can, at a separate meeting, have a discussion about some of the release of water and when that happens because the same issue came up during the holidays between Christmas and New Year's in the Sepulveda Basin in Mr. Cardenas's district, and that, and then the, if there was any evacuation, it would include Sherman Oaks, and, because that's where the water would flow. But I think it would be helpful to educate our neighborhood councils, as they have been probably listening for the last week or two weeks almost of, of... have been probably listening for the last week or two weeks almost of water damage and the levels going up, et cetera, to kind of let them know what the process is. And again, you were, as mentioned by Ellis, a much more, you were very proactive, not reactive, but proactive on a lot of levels, and that was very much appreciated. But I think that would, if you're okay with that, Chief Bematri at some later date, again, either we coordinate and do it with the Neighborhood Councils or...
I think that's an excellent idea, and certainly the progression is natural. Prior to both you and Councilmember Cardenas coming on the council, we didn't get notified when they would release water from the Sepulveda Dam, and that created the horrendous situation we had a few years back with having to literally drive apparatus out into the lake there to make rescues. So we've made that step, but now the natural progression would be is a way to communicate that out to the Neighborhood Councils and to the residences so that there's an active understanding and knowledge of what's happening during the storm. And certainly it's manageable as long as everybody's talking to each other and communicating. So that's something we can do.
And I think the other, and I know my time is, I'm just a little bit over, but I won't be long, is the swift water rescue and the education. I mean, you didn't really, other than that one incident, we didn't have the kind of trouble you'd expect. I live adjacent to the Tahunga wash before it gets to the river, and you literally could hear inside my house the roar of that water coming down, and every night thought about anyone who dared to get close to it. So I think you've done an excellent job in educating people about the dangers and the importance of that, and the mayor in the last few days, you know, coming out and reminding people, as we did out in my district the other day.
One of the things, I know last week you had before you the new measure about the parking during the brush season. We're looking at doing a similar thing with the Los Angeles River during these heavy rains, is having a way to work with the other departments to secure those areas, to ensure that people don't get into those areas recreationally that then cause problems.
And even maybe on some of those streets that, and I'll think of Sister Elsie and Gyro, which we had, which I think are one of the areas which would be for the fire aspect of it, but also in heavy rains, the potential for those vehicles to be problematic for access to those roads.
After this answer, Ms. Gruel, I ask you to press your button again.
Yes, thank you.
Any response? Okay. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. You had mentioned Monticello Heights and Mount Washington and the Lincoln Heights Hills as well, connected to Monticello Heights. I want to thank you for your response to that wall that fell. Luckily, no one got hurt. But there was a reference to an assessment team. Chief, could you just talk about what variables, what factors are they looking at when they're assessing? Please hold my time.
I think I might pass that to Gary Moore. We're actually working with them from, with our fire prevention inspectors that have knowledge because of the brush issues that we deal with, but we bring their specialists and the geotechnical engineers. So I'll let Gary address that.
Thanks. We're out there with, it's a, the six teams have two members from the Bureau of Engineering. One is a geologist and one is a geotechnical engineer. Each of them bring a specialty to the table. And when we're out there driving the neighborhoods, we're, we know of areas, like you said, that we've seen these problems in the past. We're concentrating on those areas. As we feel secure in those areas, we'll continue to branch out to other areas that could be secondary areas of possible problems. So it's a very proactive, a windshield, as we say. It's driving through the neighborhood, street by street, using our Emergency Operations Center for any of the other departments who have seen anything. Of course, working very closely with Street Services, and any type of minor mud flows, we're going out there to investigate those.
Many of the older neighborhoods have these EPA, the WPA, these old projects back in the 30s, and there's been a pattern the past three years where they've been just falling, just collapsing. And now with the saturation of the earth and the weight of the water, I would hope that we can look at those trends and perhaps start being a little, how can we be proactive? Because many of the houses are built right on these ledges that were built by these old walls, and my fear is that so far, unfortunately, we've only had one person die, a homeless person in Elysian Park because of the landslide. But here we have very concentrated areas with a lot of folks living in these homes. So is there a way in which we can start to look at the pattern of where these walls are falling, maybe be a little bit more proactive instead of waiting for it to happen?
We'll definitely go back and take a look after the storm is completed and so forth, and what we can do to do some type of an assessment or how we could go about approaching and working with Street Services and seeing, like you say, continue the proactive mentality that we have.
Right. I appreciate that. Last but not least, the, it's a lot of debris falling from the palm trees. A lot of limbs that get heavy with water that are falling on the trees, I mean, on the streets, in people's homes. Our green cans are only so big. And so where we place them, is there a way in which we can start thinking about centralizing at least locations where people can take the larger limbs, the larger branches, so that way we can help you clear the roadway and start letting people move the debris? Because it's piling up on the curbs. When it piles up on the curbs, if we have more rain, the flow of water is going to make it even more difficult and create little rivers because of these limbs and debris that's piling up on the sidewalks, on the sides of the streets and the curbs, especially in the hillsides that have very, the sloped areas. The water comes down like a river, and with the limbs and stuff on the trees, it's getting even harder to drive up. Just the mere fact that people are turning their tires on the curbs makes the water run a different direction and causes even more problems. So my suggestion is, and maybe we can look at this, is maybe the city can look at pickup points. If you can drop off these limbs, the prongs from the palm trees, there's a lot of them, and that could be a centralized place in which we could help you pick up the debris and clear out the areas that need to be picked up, because these green cans are not going to cut it.
That's an excellent idea, Councilman. During the brush clearance season, we have special pickups with the Department of Sanitation. That's something we can reinstitute for a period here, and we can work and make sure that we can get that going.
If you can let us know, we can contact Neighborhood Councils, use our staff to inform the homeowner associations and the various stakeholders. We can just designate pickup points, you can drop their branches and everything else that's essentially blocking our streets and causing more danger. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I want to stand to thank everyone who's working on this effort in all the departments. Mr. Weiss, I thank you what you said this morning. It was wonderful to see the blue sky. I was able to park right at the border Griffith Park and hike up to Mount Hollywood, where there were several trails that were totally destroyed by mudslides. The mountains are still crying and crying with still a great roar. The Bird Sanctuary was destroyed due to the runoff that is there, and Mr. Mukri and his team of recreational parks are working on, they've isolated, they closed Griffith Park, but looking at these other areas. But as I walked up there, when I did cross some of these points, you went down ankle-deep in mud, and it's a very serious, serious matter. And on Sunday morning, after leaving for a meeting at Park La Brea, I talked to my neighbor who was dealing with a little mud coming out of his home and asked him if he needed any help, and he was concerned a little bit, but it wasn't that big of a deal. When I returned in the afternoon and did some stuff around my house, I sent my family off to the movies, my daughter and wife, and I was in front of my steps where Alex Padilla is sitting right there, and where my neighbor sits out at the back of the chambers, I looked and, after her, a loud roar of what I thought was a big tree falling from a hill in Silver Lake, but it was a power line that had fallen and exploded. And that blue light, Henry, that just went through there loudest as thunder, and just as I was watching CNN, the rush of mud through the home that destroyed much of this home. Fortunately, the gentleman who was in the home was on the west side of his property, and he wasn't there. And also, he was quite concerned, as it was his wife who later arrived, totally stunned of their animal, their pet, which later was found alive, which was such an important aspect. But within minutes, I, excuse me, within seconds, I picked up the phone and threw it down, jumped in my car and actually drove and honked my horn to try to raise the man who lived in the house, which he then waved to me, and picked up my city-issued radio and called the Fire Department, which immediately responded and did a tremendous job, as well as Street Services, as well as water and power, as well as building and safety. Now, the key is, and this is the last guy who I didn't address on here on this issue, but Rita, there is a storm drain through the upper lot. And James, here's the thing that was the tough thing from the transportation standpoint. We have a hillside area, what do you do on a hillside area? You park your cars, curb to the driveway. And what may have happened is a car parked on an upper street had curbs to the driveway on a steep street, which allowed water unfortunately to divert, which then went through another property, which went through the easement of water power, which went through there. So there's some issues that we got to look at to remind them. Chief Bematri, you said something so important, which I think we talked about yesterday, today's the day to do home assessments. So I hope you preach that, to look around our properties where we live, to see, to make sure water is running away from our home and not to our home. James, I also wanted to ask, and I don't know if this council needs to do it, a policy on citations in days like this. I thank all those officers who were in the streets directing traffic where there are lights out, but I would like to ask that we look on, is there a policy necessary for your department to suspend? Because I did speak to an officer who was in Largemont Village, and she understood what I was saying. Let's go someplace else. Let's not worry about a parking meter on a day like today. So I did want to talk that. I do want to address power outages, because there were several neighborhoods that had a number of outages. I did address the issue of the animals' needs, but I also wanted, Rita, there was 40,000 gallons that went in the LA River due to the Los Angeles Glendale Plant. What happens, if I could ask you a question, because the river was so high, your outfall was covered by water, so you can't release water? Please explain that to us.
I'll have the staff come up. They'll be much better at it than me.
Mr. Labange?
Yes. I know I'm over, but it was very important. I asked to be over a little.
Good morning, Council. I'm Chuck Terhalle with Bureau of Sanitation. Despite the high level in the LA River, the Glendale Plant can still discharge into the river safely. It was designed that way from the beginning when they built it, 1977, and it's discharged every time like that when we get very high levels in the LA River.
Where did the 40,000 get dumped into the LA River? Forty thousand gallons reported?
Which 40,000 gallons are you talking about?
This is reported in the news. So I'll check the news source. Forty thousand gallons of sewage got dumped into the news. That's what I either read this morning very early or...
Hello, Barry Bergeren with Bureau of Sanitation. The spill that you're referring to was a number of smaller spills in the Hollywood area.
Okay.
There was a total of 40,000 gallons on several small spills from overtaxed sewers. It was not any one location. It was not from the LA Glendale Plant. We do have other sewer overflows that are ongoing at this time. And basically, that's in the Eagle Rock area, bordered from Eagle Rock Boulevard over to Avenue 56, and from York Boulevard south to Avenue 31. And Rita spoke about the Nice Project in the east area, the Eagle Rock Interceptor Sewer. Those projects are scheduled to be done this year. Unfortunately, the rain came before they were done. And there, as I say, there's ongoing overflows in that area. We have deployed all our crews, and our crews have been in that area since December 26th. The other area is the 110 Freeway and Figaroa Street, from Meridian to Avenue 56, and there's some sewer overflows there. There's also projects to, capital improvement projects we're working with the Bureau of Engineering to implement, but it's about 18 months to two years away in that area. There were other overflows at Sentinel and Sepulveda. That is just basically an overtaxed sewer that has approximately 200,000 gallons last night. And we have some other problem areas in Hollywood area coming out of the canyons where there's just so much runoff coming down those sewers.
Through the mountains, isn't it?
Through the mountains.
Thank you. I'll push my button again. I thank you. Just last question. What is 40,000 gallons? Does it fill this room? How big is 40,000 gallons? I know what a, you know, a big space.
Approximately two household swimming pools.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to acknowledge the SIR Teams, Neighborhood Councils, and out in the 3rd District. We have our community posse that have been involved in trying to help the people that have been suffering some of the consequences of this. I hope the sun stays for a while and we can recoup, because it's been a long time since we've seen that. The issue for Street Services, Bill, driving in this morning, there's potholes everywhere. I know people are going to be concerned about calling those. I know Caltrans was out yesterday on the freeways patching potholes in the rain because people are getting blowouts. Some of these potholes are just incredible in size now. We know what happens when the rains come, it takes that asphalt. Can you give some advice and suggestions other than watching as you're traveling down the road, your response to patching those? We've got that, that new equipment that we haven't really brought out to the public yet. Are we utilizing that? And when people have that concern, 311 is one number to call to report those, and we'd ask the SIR Team, the Posse members, the Neighborhood Council folks in their neighborhoods to report that. And I know there's going to be thousands of reports coming in.
Yes.
Do you have a coordinated effort for that and a timely manner to take care of that matter, in addition to all the other things you got to take care of?
Yes, Councilman Zine. Matter of fact, we have already started addressing the pothole problem today. We will be working throughout the weekend with our hot mix. Our plants will be back up and running tomorrow. The problem with the rain is that a lot of our aggregate and our sand, the components that make our asphalt are so saturated, our plant production is going to be down for a while, but primarily, we will be manufacturing the material directed strictly for potholes. So over the next probably seven days, we'll have a concentrated effort throughout the daylight hours of addressing potholes citywide. And you're correct, like I mentioned earlier, we have already backlogged 760 locations, and we expect hundreds and hundreds more to come in as people start to see it, now that the water is receding a little bit.
Now, they can report it 311, they can also report it online?
Yeah, we prefer that they report it to 311, because I mentioned earlier, 311 right now, while we're activated, is directly linked to our VOC. It'll come in as an emergency request, and we will give those potholes the priority. Some of the potholes that even I dodged personally this morning were big-sized holes.
They are big. I know that, and I know that people have to understand. There's going to be a time process. When you're doing that, are you doing major thoroughfares first and then the secondary roadways? And are they going on complaints, or when they travel down the major thoroughfares, they observe it and they patch them? And again, as you know, there's many of them around.
Yes, we have known areas on our select system streets that we automatically target right after a rainfall, because we know we're going to have pothole problems. A Wilshire Boulevard would be example. We have the crews in the individual areas that'll be both addressing the select system streets and the local streets. As you well know, we've got 1,000 miles of failed streets in our residential areas, and those are going to be heavily, heavily impacted by this rain. So it'll be both. It'll be a combined effort. We will have crews just patrolling known areas, but we will be responding directly to individual requests for potholing.
Okay, thank you, Bill. And they can also report that online?
Yes, they can.
In addition to 311?
Yes.
The online to lacity.org. And also for DOT, 50 DOT staffing barricades. And I was noticing on the news this morning, up, I think it was Sunland Tahunga, Sunland Tahunga, somewhere near the, Tuxford, I believe it was, where a tractor trailer came through, and I believe a public bus came through, and I heard a school bus went through. Are you getting compliance when we're setting up the barricades, warning people not to enter those areas? Are they complying or are they disregarding and going through?
I don't know about that particular location, but we have had situations where people are not compliant, but that's where we don't have the officers, because we don't have officers at all the closures.
Right.
So when we do have the officers, obviously, they are compliant.
You are getting compliance with your officers?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know, Chief, from the Fire Department, some people get trapped in a situation unintentional. Some people put themselves in that point where now resources have to be expended to rescue them. Have you done any rescues locally? I noticed the public basin's been blocked off in some of these other areas. I saw the one on the television where the man was in the wash and the Fire Department was able to rescue him after the second attempt. Did we have any in the city of LA this time?
We have had river rescues involving the young child last week and smaller ones. Most of our swift water rescue involved intersections. I, when I went down to the EOC yesterday, I took the picture off of the newspaper of the young lady standing on her car at Tuxford. And I think we all understand the need that identifying these problematic areas and getting them blocked off before they reach those saturation levels. So I think the city family is doing an excellent job now responding to those intersections. But as you mentioned, unfortunately, it hasn't been good enough just to have the barricades there. We need to have police officers there deterring people from going through and managing them. And that's what we're working on now.
And one concern I have, if they intentionally put themselves in that point of peril versus some accident where they happen to be there and it happens... some accident where they happen to be there and it happens, we're gonna look at something to strengthen some enforcement on that, because if person wants to put themselves in that and the resources, and then your person will have to risk their lives to save these people because they want to have a prank or whatever the case may be. There's a distinction between the two. We have to rescue them, but some who cause that upon themselves, that's another concern for us. And that's why I was concerned about people running the barricades. They're there for a purpose. And I kept on hearing the news reports don't run the barricades, and then on this morning's news, I saw these, the people actually going right through. Thank you.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two more points in general. One, what are the conditions of our debris basins in the city? And who and how are we coordinating clearing those out to be ready for more rainfall or more debris to come down from those areas?
Our ongoing program of debris removal has protected us in a storm, so we're continuing the process that we've already had in place. So there's no, you know, other than the crews being exhausted from some of the other work, our cleaning crews are continuously out there keeping the debris basins open.
And obviously, those, that's why they were built in the first place, knowing that debris was gonna come down in heavy rains and in mudslide, and that's where it's supposed to go. But as I say, once it fills up, as it continues to come down, it can then inundate our streets and our homes. And so obviously, it's something we need to be alert on. And the other is really for DOT. Clearly, I mean, I think we saw over the last weekend, in some instances, almost every road between the valley and the heart of the city were blocked or very nearly down to one lane, including the 405. And I guess the question is, how are we coordinating with Caltrans to make sure that when that situation exists, that we are getting information out over the news media, et cetera, telling people which way they can go? Because with low oil, cold water, et cetera, I think Beverly Glen was open for a little while. And I, there was a rumor about a potential sinkhole on the 405 near 101 northbound. And I don't know whether you had any information about that. I know that the southbound today has a closure in part because of a landslide on Sepulveda that got onto the freeway. But just how are we coordinating to let people know, as they are doing a daily commute, one side or the other, which are the best routes to take, as well as using a lot of caution, a lot of patience, and just letting them know that this is where the best diversion should be?
We are, Councilwoman, we are not, I don't think, adequately doing that job in telling people which routes to take. We are only informing them of the closures. When the freeways are closed, we do deploy officers and engineers to route them on, like, on the parallel city streets. However, we do have a certain amount of, I think about a half dozen changeable message signs, so we do direct people off the freeway. Caltrans uses their CMS, and on our city streets, we put the CMS to direct them. But I don't know if we're communicating in general. If you're on that street, yes, you are, but you already got caught in the traffic jam already. So I don't think we're adequately warning people before they get into that area that the streets are jammed. Except for the news media who picks up the information and helps us.
Well, that's critical, to have that coordination, and also the coordination with Caltrans, and if it's possible, to use their signboards when they're saying, you know, these streets closed, use this, to give people the direction or suggestion, rather than letting people try to fend for themselves and flail around to try to find the best route. I think that could be helpful, too. So let's just try to continue to reinforce that. And I just want to share that that's been expressed by my colleagues, to really work closely, not only with our team, which I think has been doing an excellent job, and I really appreciate that, but also to now use the network that we have of the neighborhood councils, coordinate with Dunn, get this information out there, the numbers available, the sandbags availability at the fire stations, the importance of adhering to the barricades. Because people may say, well, gee, it looks fine now, I can go on through that, only to get caught in something later, which is gonna put not only themselves at risk, but potentially our rescuers at risk, to have to go in when the rescuer has said, you ought not to be here. So I appreciate the work, I commend it. I know you've got an awful lot of hard work ahead of you, hearing from Mr. Robinson saying, we've got 30 days of work at least, just to clean up what's been going on now, and go back and pick up the branches of the trees, and reopen the streets, and fill the potholes. But again, it's a team effort. We've got a lot of public members who are really interested in participating with you, and as long as you keep us informed and get that information to us, in terms of the numbers, in terms of opportunities for our communities, I think we'll weather this as best we can. So thank you for that effort. Thank you for the proactive effort, as you say, on a dry day, to activate EOC, because you knew what could come, and you knew that it was best to do it on Friday, to be there up and operating over the weekend. That was really prudent and really wise in terms of helping to prevent, I think, a lot more problems that could have occurred, but for your proactive stance. So thank you for that very much.
Mr. Labanche.
Thank you very much. Ms. Miskowski, would you mind saying what you told me a minute ago about the comment someone made years ago about city employees?
I think it was Mayor Richard Reardon who said that city employees are best, are most effective and most efficient in time of emergencies, and they really pull together and can show the team effort, and I think we're seeing it demonstrated again today.
Yeah, thank you, Sidney, because I remember that was a direct result of the 94 earthquake, and where the new mayor had questions, but when he saw how everyone worked. And again, the other night, in my home with the fire department, with the water and power, with street services, et cetera. But just a couple of quick points I wanted to ask. What is, do we know what the fine is for driving around barricades at all? Because I think we should. I reset some barricades when there was a slide on Glendale Boulevard, Station 56 on the backside of the road, and people kept driving over it, I couldn't believe it. And I think the liability should be there. Maybe the city attorney could look into that for us. And also, another thing, I did talk to Chief Gascon of the operations of LAPD. Citizen reported to me, because of the noise of a window wiper and the noise of a heater in a car, you don't hear the red lights and sirens as you would in a non-weather-related day. To make note of that, so we don't, so the officers who are driving necessarily with red lights and sirens are aware of that, and I know the fire chief is aware of that as well. And also, I watch the news now, and they've technically got a lot better as far as the Doppler weather system. How checked in is the press to the EOC? How much have they checked into it? Is there any more we could advance that to give them real-time information?
Councilmember, actually, this PIO effort was led by the fire department, and there's an ongoing relationship and infusion of information both ways to the press. Relative to some of the other things, the, we are actually tied into the NOAA Weather Wire, and we have that information, so we have a constant feed of weather, if that's the question that you're asking.
Okay, well, thank you. I just think if we could look at that in the future, because I often remember when, in the 94 earthquake, which was a very traumatic event, a lot of news was, was just so not confirmed, but they were reporting the news as reported, but real-life information, real-time information is extremely important.
No, we get information out, that's part of the process of...
But I mean, directly to them, so they get it right in that area. With that in mind, then, I want to thank Bob Collis and Jim Wells and Brian Humphrey of the fire department, who do such a wonderful job by name, I want to thank them, and all those who participated. Sidney, I thank you again for what you said there, but it's true, the response that people were given, there's more work, the time comes, if wind blows, trees could fall. I know I spoke with the MTA about the issues related to the subway, where there was no problems on the subway, no problems on the green line, no problems on the blue line, but there was a problem on the gold line. It's the same thing that Mr. Reyes mentioned, a palm frond. And I know, in talking to Tom McCarthy of the DWP, palm fronds sometimes will blow a block or two and trip a wire, which makes it a challenge on that. Again, thank you all very, very much, and thank all your people, let's keep working hard.
Mr. Reyes.
I wanted to know if our Christmas tree pickup points, are they still in effect? Could we use, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yes, yes. In fact, we're extending the program, because we knew last weekend would be difficult, but also, we're gonna be telling people, they can put it at the curb, we'll pick it up, because we know it may be difficult for people at this point to even get to Griffith Park, and so we're gonna pick them up, even if they can't cut them up.
What's the possibility of having these same points be the destinations for people to deliver the limbs and the tree branches and the fronds from the palm trees? Because people already know where they're at. They've been notified, there's been a public notice. If you have big limbs and stuff, could that be a potential? That way, it's consistent, the trend is there, and information is out there, and we can use that to take all the bulky debris that's falling from the trees. Is that possible?
It's definitely possible on our end, and we'll work with street services and with fire to coordinate it and inform everyone.
Can you let us know so that we can get to that? Because I think all this debris, when we start piling up with the sun out, people are gonna wanna clean up, and I have a lot of dumping going on in my district, and I don't want to stimulate that dumping, because people have nowhere to put all this debris. And if we can use those pickup points for the trees, it's an easy way to just keep the folks going to where they're already used to going. Thank you.
Mr. Labanche.
Mr. Reyes tripped an idea. Because of the weather, all bulky items are 10 times heavier because of the water that's in them. Mr. Robinson, when you pick up the palm fronds in grid streets that have palm trees, usually the neighbors stack them at the end, some streets don't have that, do you recycle those, or those go to landfills? Or is that separate from your, what happens to those palm fronds? Because I'm thinking there could be a little merge between sanitation and street services there. No, actually, all our green waste, including palm fronds, is recycled. Recycled all. But also, could you pick up, if you see any Christmas trees? Because a lot of the things on the, because of the storm, was in the last part of the last week on collection, a lot of the Christmas trees got left, and people couldn't do that. And also, what happens, too, in the storm, when there's no drains, a lot of cans get floated around, so that is a challenge. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions, colleagues? If not, thank you very much, gentlemen, for the report. You've had a number of requests from various council members, and I look forward to the ongoing work. On the motion itself, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. And before moving on to the next item, I want to thank the members of the public for their patience. We do have the items called special. We have a motion for reconsideration for Mr. Varegosa, and then we're gonna get to general public comment, and the number of you are here for that. Mr. Varegosa.
Yes, Mr. President, members, I'd like to reconsider on behalf of Councilmember Greg Smith, item number 33, and then continue the matter until March 4th.
Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item 33 is reconsidered, and without objection, continued to March 4th. And that'll bring us to a general public comment for today's meeting. And the council calls forward at this time Candy Domares, followed by Joe Sina, Debbie Gould, Nikki Postulu, Sochi Baker, and a number of other speakers. Madam Clerk, can we put up a clock, please?
Thank you, Council President. We appreciate that you've given us this time. Councilman Cardinals, thank you very much for asking for public comment. Next month, a year ago, this council and the mayor put together a committee, Small Local Business Advisory Committee, and it was to take a look at the business climate here in the City of Los Angeles. I was co-chair of the mega contracts, and when we were looking at this, we were looking at, hopefully, an opportunity to expand the opportunities for small businesses to increase their business. What has happened is the opposite. We've seen small businesses going under, we've seen women-owned businesses go under. I would like to have you hear from them. They're still trying to stay in here and be part of the community, part of this city. Please, hear their cries. It's been over a year that we've been here. Please hear their cries. Please, go ahead.
I'm a small vendor. I sell industrial chemicals to the department and the city.
If you can give us your name, please, as you come forward.
Oh, Debbie Gould. Sorry. I've been doing business with the city for 15 years, and in the last approximately eight to nine months, I've been banned from doing business at the Department of Water and Power due to a mega contract that they have. And I, all I'm asking is my little piece of the pie. I always thought the city cannot buy from one sole vendor, and that's what they're doing right now. And for 15 years, I've given the city service and product, and now I can't do business anymore. Thank you.
My name is Sochi Baker, and I represent, I am also an independent sales agent, doing business with the city, and especially with the Department of Water and Power, for more than 10 years. And it's been about a year ago that, for the same situation, I'm not, I cannot do business with the, with the DWP due to this contract that they have awarded, sold to this company, and been, it's been just taken away, basically, food away from my table. And all I'm just asking is just to have a fair share of the pie for everybody, and not just to have one sole individual to monopolize the whole city and expand to other counties. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Nikki Postulu. And if there's one thing that I can speak to about the contract, I also am a rep for a very small business who's been doing business here in Los Angeles a good eight years now. I'm born and raised in this city. There is, on the contract, a line, item 36, that allows the supervisors to go ahead outside of contract, as they had in the past, when we all got along just great. If that can just be reviewed and eliminated, I think that maybe we could all stand a chance again, maybe moving forward. The last 10 months have been as harsh on me, as well as the competitors that were ahead of me, who are also my friends. It's something, when you have a lot of competitors coming together for one basic item, that we all got along, and we all were doing just fine, and we just want to continue, along with the contracted vendors. Thank you.
Hi, Marcy Stark with American Industrial Supply. Basically, what Nikki said is this deal, we've been together for a long time. I've been doing business for 12 years, our company's been in the City of Los Angeles for 20. And we just feel that we're just being cut out completely, and we're not asking for a lot. I mean, here we are, direct competitors that compete against each other day in and day out, and all we want is our little piece and to coexist the way we did before. We understand that there's big contracts, and that's fine. We were just talking about a small amount that we're looking at, and we're not even giving that opportunity to present our products, to even get a chance to purchase them. And they've all loved their products, we all have good products, we all stand by our products, and you just completely cut us all out. And that, a lot of us are single moms, or just working moms, and we just, you know, we want to come do our job and go home and spend time with our family, and it's just making us a lot more difficult for all of us. Thank you.
My name is John Ledea, I'm with Southend Janitorial Supplies. We manufacture flow wax and cleaners, and we've been in the City of Los Angeles for 43 years, operating in the area. About three or four years ago, they gave a contract to one major company, and that for, we can't, we don't have the opportunity to bid on any of the janitorial supply item. I think that's wrong. I believe that you need to cancel that contract and make it as a formal bid, and that way you can save money on it. There's no more opportunity for small and minority business, as long as you continue this way of doing business with the City of Los Angeles. I would like for you to break that contract and give an opportunity for everybody that's in the city, that's in business, to give an opportunity to bid on those contracts. Thank you.
My name is Joe Sina, I'm also a small business. You know, I just can't believe that we're still here. I don't think anybody is listening. This is over a year now. The last understanding we had was when this new contract was not going to be signed. I can't even believe it has been signed. Light item, line item 36 basically prevents us from doing business. The owner of the mega contract is in this room today, I just had a conversation with him. I can't believe what I heard. I asked him, do you mind if you, if line item 36 was removed? Well, no, no, that's not what I'm saying. They want us to sell our product line to their company, so they can now sell it to the Department of Water and Power and upcharge it. I don't understand this, okay? I am angry, yes. It makes no sense. A month ago, we were in room 1060, as we were this morning, and it was a purchasing agent in there. A couple of questions were asked of that purchasing agent. Why, in fact, did you buy a fire retardant for a particular dollar amount that was illegal in the state of California and didn't work? My point is, why are we still here? Are you listening? Thank you.
Thank you again for the time. I've spoke to most of you here several times about the same issue.
Your name, sir?
My name is John Bush. I began the quest with this as a competitor, and looking for the sales and the same problem... the sales and the same problems that everybody's faced as far as the business end of it. I got deeper into it. I've investigated the contract. I've found paperwork. I've gone through these things. I have presented to Mr. Netka two different occasions in his office, and two hours at one time, an hour and a half at another time. I presented to him paperwork, the same that I presented to some of you folks, showing where the department has been double and triple charged for items on this contract that were supposed to be line item number one. They're substituted two and a half times the charge. Line item number two, substituted same item, double charged. Certain items charged $68 per case at 500 cases of this item that another company was selling at $37 per case. I have documents still that show where some of these items are go out to bid. When they are bid, they're bid at a lower price than what the contract is. The contract should be the lowest price. I was told by Mr. Netka that these things have been taken care of. It's rectified. This will no longer happen. Now, if it's been rectified, if it will no longer happen, that means there was an error. Why has the city not been reimbursed by the man by the company who charged them double and triple? Why is it being neglected? Why is it all overlooked? I've spoken for three and a half hours with Mr. Netka. He's told me face to face that his 25-year personal relationship with the owner of the company doesn't affect this anything. He laughed at me and said, no, that doesn't affect anything. Just because I have a 25-year friendship with this person doesn't have anything to do with why we let these things go. We're fixing them. We're not going to let this go on. But yet, they turned right around two weeks later and renewed the contract under Mr. Netka's approval. These questions need to be answered. It's gone long enough and far enough to where when they can stand and admit that there's errors and not rectify them, financially, there's a big problem.
I want to thank you, council members. Actually, I want to go back, probably back to the year 2000. And there's some old council members that I do want to thank. One of them is present today, Mr. Nate Holden. Him and Ruth Galanter and Jackie Goldberg did a great job. When I came to council member in regards of the contracting out with the custodial services, they did a great job in getting that turned around. I do believe in council. A lot of upper management, they don't believe we should be council-controlled. I believe we need to be more council-controlled. There is justice that has been served since we came to you guys. I'm very thankful for Ron Deaton. I hope we get the opportunity to sincerely meet down with this gentleman and discuss the issues. I want to go over the fact that when I'm getting a little difficult here, when Mr. Luciano, who was here just prior to Thanksgiving, he was retaliated, he has given a package, he is pending to lose his job. I'm not quite sure where Ron Deaton is at with the issues. Maybe he's not fully aware of what's going on. I'm sure it's going to take time for him to get things turned around. When I came here back in the year of 2000, right after I came to speak to council, three days later, I was escorted with four security officers in front of the JFB, taken up to medical and drug testing. You talk about being violated as a woman and as a minority. How humiliating that was. I never used drugs in my life. I've always been a dedicated city employee. And here we are today, revisiting nightmares with management and DWP. They don't think they need to be council-controlled. They do. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniel Schrader. I have personal experience with retaliation and the ruinous nature of our Assistant General Manager, Thomas Hokinson, and his agents acting on his behalf. It is not a coincidence that my supervisor, Thomas Patzlaaf, Labor Relations Manager, Peter Lakatos, and Senior Labor Representatives, Mark Howard and DeMarlo Sims, are here in the audience observing us. There is nothing in the agenda requiring their attendance. Their job is discipline. I want this intimidation stopped. I asked and received personal time off from work. This is management orchestrated systemic psychological abuse of employees who are exercising their right for free speech. I hope that all of you and newly-appointed General Manager Ronald Deaton will see that this intimidation needs to be stopped immediately. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jerry Alkind with Empire Cleaning Supply. I'm the person that has the mega contract, and I work with Water and Power. When I started the contract, I had zero participation with small and minority businesses. I've worked diligently with LA Ops, and I now have over 30% participation with small vendors. So it's not like one company displacing others. I've included them, and I've won awards from both Mayor Riordan and HON. Actually, I'm here as a to offer a formal invitation to all of these vendors to come talk to me and see if we can't work together. I've included many, many others. There's no reason to stop here. And thank you.
My name is Vernon Brown, and it's good to see each of you here and all of you here together. One of the amazing things about economic empowerment, about economic freedom, is that those of us as small business or minority individuals must learn a method, manner, and way to be of value to a mega contractor. I'm in the business of selling wiping cloth, rags, paper towels. When you give your clothing to Salvation Army, Goodwill, I'll come by and buy it by the ton, recycle it, and sell it all over the world. 15 years ago, I didn't have any money. My friends helped me get into the business. Now we're a national organization, and it simply means that all of us can make it if we try. The real issue in America today is not one vendor versus the other. It's what's called mega contracting. The mega contracting was created some years ago for the big folks to create everything. It is not a janitorial issue. It is a cross-the-board issue. So if it's a real issue, then let's clean up the process and make it all fair. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ken Flippin. I've been before this board before, letting you know that I was fired due to discrimination. I went to bat for a fellow employee that had been discriminated against, and I spoke up. So you could say I was a whistleblower. So because of that, I was fired. And I don't think anybody has looked into this besides City Council. City Council has now made me file another lawsuit for discrimination against the handicap. I have all my witnesses has been intimidated and coerced not to testify for me. DWP has a habit of doing things like this. It's hard for me to get up here and talk because I've got so much to say, and I don't have much time. But I did get a letter from the EEO, which is the Department of Water and Power. They investigated discrimination, and nothing was done. They turned it over to the ODCR, which they investigated with the Department of Water and Power EEO. Their finding was that, yes, they got me 14 days after I testified for the gentleman that was being discriminated against. They came after me, and consequently, I was fired because of that. Also, the job that I was on, they came out to, they said was not a setup. But it was a setup because of the fact I wasn't even scheduled for that job. That job wasn't supposed to be done that day. There was nobody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Panaya. Members, again, it's been over a year. It's been over a year. The pain and suffering that has taken place is unbelievable. You had a young man in November that come here, Sandra, I mentioned him, Luciano Yi. He came to you and said that there was a problem with the product that was brought in, that it was unsafe. What did they do? They brought every soon as that happened, they brought charges against him. He was escorted off the property, like he was a convicted felon. They escorted him out with guards, a man that has served 16 years. And then what they did is they brought in all these other issues about subpurchase order. They never held anybody else accountable but the lowest man on the totem pole. What happened to the person in the middle, his supervisor? Where were they at? We cannot allow this retaliation to take place. Mr. President, council members, how long does this have to go on? Please, we have to do. Something has to be done on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there a Brian Panosian here to speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. President and the council. I live in West Chester by Loyola University, Marymount University. And for the past, I guess, I've lived there seven years since March of 97. And since that time, I've been dealing with a slumlord that has been that owns the property at 6406 and 6410 West 85th Place. And I've tried repeated times by letters to him and to the councilwoman in our district, Cindy Misakowski, and was met with numerous roadblocks and
Okay. Let me see if we can't get a staff member here to assist you.
I'm sorry?
Let me see if we can't get a staff representative from that council office to assist you here this morning.
Yeah. In '03, some girls were living in the house that went to the Otis School, and the condition of the house had broken windows. At that time, my daughter was two years old, and I wrote a letter to Mr. Lamanna regarding a dilapidated vehicle in the driveway, and he subsequently moved it. And for the past three years now, I've been dealing with an RV in the driveway. And he has made no effort to move it, only a number of times, or actually, a number of times, he has moved it and then brought it back. And I've got letters here and photographs if people want to see it.
If you'd give us a minute, again, let me see if we can't get a staff member from that council office to be of assistance to you. And at this point, let me close general public comment for today's meeting. For those of you who are here on the DWP matter, on behalf of Councilmember Cardenas, the matter has been not only discussed in committee, but there's some increasing scrutiny and oversight of the department. It was addendized for today. This morning's Commerce Committee meeting continued once again as they're getting to the bottom of it in committee. Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, I was just going to say for those who are here, I know that they were here in Commerce Committee, and we weren't able to get to this item because Mr. Cardenas did not want to rush it, but wanted to give the everyone who's there ample time and hold the department to be there to be responsive to this. We continue to the next meeting of Commerce and Energy Committee, which will be early on the agenda so we can give it its due time and analysis on the part of those who are testifying as well as all others in terms of getting to the bottom of it. So January 25th is the date that we will have this in Commerce Committee.
Okay. Before proceeding to the next item, I believe Mr. Cardenas' questions have been answered in items 14 and 15. Unless there's further discussion on those matters, we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ms. Misakowski.
We could also allow 42 to go forward.
Okay, 14 and 15 are approved. Item 42, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved as well. Ms. Gruehl.
I know my next item is item eight. My question has been answered, and I would move approval.
Okay. Any further discussion? Saying none, let's open the roll on item eight, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Roll and ride along. Next item, please.
That would be item number 11, and that was called special by Councilmember Misakowski.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. LaBange had asked that I call this special, basically just to show it's an idea that came about as a consequence of a neighborhood council concern, senior lead officer concern, neighborhood prosecutor concern about some loitering and staying after hours in some of the problem areas in and around some of our libraries. So this is an effort to indicate by passage of an ordinance that loitering after hours, particularly in some of the parking lots and the darker areas around our libraries, is not to be allowed. And then also asking the city librarian has indicated a willingness to designate a person in some of these hotspot areas or high-need areas who would then coordinate as the city librarian with the senior leads in their area, with the housing authority in their area, to help provide services to those who might otherwise be finding some use of that public facility, particularly the landscaping in the outer area, when in fact, we can provide other services through some other city agencies. So it's just to call that out, to let people know that this is a process which is both trying to be willing to be responsive to communities, but also willing to be responsive to the people who are in need of alternative shelter and bringing a task force together in those specific areas to deal with it.
Mr. LaBange.
Ms. Misakowski, thank you and thank your staff. I just want to do this because we have this in committee. Thank the city librarian and her staff. Thank the senior lead officer and your staff. Thank the neighborhood prosecutor and your team, together as a team, to try to help out here, and the suggestions were made. I know Councilmember Ludlow had some suggestions too, which contributed to this as we came back. I apologize for keeping you all this time here on this issue here. But I think it's very important that anyone has a right to make it to a public door without having to come over anything or anybody. And at the same time, we have a responsibility to inform anyone who may be down on their luck where they could go to get help, where they could go to get some assistance on that. And I hate to see it happen in public libraries because that turns people away. Because if we ever want to be inspired, just like we were inspired by the sunshine that came over Los Angeles today, walk into a public library and you'll be inspired by all the people who are in there working and all the people who are learning. Information is power is knowledge. Los Angeles Public Libraries. And the same is true for those who all work together on this. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Misakowski.
Ms. Perry.
I just want to ask a few questions. Sorry, my mic just fell apart. Few questions for clarification. I think when I last spoke with Fontaine, she that's okay. It's okay, Fontaine. I just wanted to clarify if there is an ordinance on the books now that deals with this issue, because I'm concerned that there's no separation between the public right-of-way and the right-of-way or the sidewalk that leads up into the library, and in fact, it's a public place. So I don't know if the city attorney
Is there a city attorney here that can answer that question?
Is there a city attorney on point on this? Why don't you yeah?
Good morning, Janet Jackson, City Attorney's Office. There is a current ordinance that does exist. This is a suggested modification of the hours only.
So this extends the hours to explain that so people who are listening can truly understand?
It does extend the hours that would include the periods of loitering. It extends it by, I think, approximately five hours.
And then if you have you have an employee on site who deals with high-need issues for people who are homeless, is that what is contemplated? There's a reference there to have a designation of a library employee, I guess, to be the person who does the outreach on high-need issues?
Yes, I think it's more appropriate to let the city librarian speak on that issue.
Good afternoon, council members. Fontaine Holmes, City Librarian. Yes, actually, as Janet Jackson said, this is a change in the hours. It is currently 10:30 PM to 5:30 AM, and this takes it from 9:00 to 9:00. The central library and all the branches are open six and seven days a week and several nights a week. We open at 10:00 and we close at 8:00. So this takes it an hour before and an hour after the library is closed. I just want to tell you that all of our libraries are open, and everyone in the community is welcome in the libraries during our public service hours, those who have residence in Los Angeles and those who do not have homes of their own. And this is, in addition to this, the change in this hours of this ordinance, I want to tell you that we already do have posting of all of the shelters, ability for food, transportation to shelters. Our librarians give out information at the information desks. They print out information from the websites with the current information. If someone is not able to make a phone call, they do call and try and connect people with the shelters.
All right, let me ask one other question, Fontaine, and I'll make it very quick and I'll then hold my time. And what are you what are you going to do or what is the protocol for someone who is shelter-resistant or rejects entreaties for social service or to move? How do you handle that?
Well, then, in that case, obviously, the librarians do not have the ability to do anything further than provide the information, make the phone calls. And we certainly work with all of the other social service agencies. We're able to call. Los Angeles Police Department has been actually was part of has been, actually was part of Teamwork LA that made the recommendation to the Library Commission for this change, and so they have been very proactive when there has been problems. And this stemmed from the Venice Branch Library and Teamwork LA, but it is something that occurs in many, many communities and many libraries.
Okay, one more follow-up question. In extending the hours, tell me what LAPD says it will enable them to do more effectively now that they couldn't do before. Hold my time.
Yes, if I may, Officer Teresa Skinner is here from LAPD, and she has been working in this area.
Good morning. One of the biggest problems that we have is with our deployment. Our PM Watch, our graveyard shift officers are very busy between the hours of about 3:00 and 5:00 in the morning. Our day watch officers come out about 6:15:00, and right now, they're not able to get to the library until 6:15:00, at which time, they're pretty much allowed to be there from 5:30 in the morning on. And that's when the librarian is having problems entering, the maintenance crews are having problems cleaning, and that's when the police are generally called.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, members? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 12, called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I won't be long, and I want to thank, if we could have representatives from Glaza and the CAO and City Attorney's Office, they've been patient today. If you'd come just to the front table. And colleagues, the reason I called this special, and we have had it in audits efficiency, I think it's been in Arts, has it been in Arts Parks?
It was.
It was previously, yes. This is just an opportunity, I think, which we're going to assure the public that we are addressing issues of concern, and one was ensuring that the docents and potentially concessionaires participate in the fingerprinting program. We found that this was something that had not been done in the past, but had been of an interest and concern, and so now we are moving forward to that. We thought it was also going to be very easy to just begin that fingerprinting program, and thank the departments, I think of both Wreckin' Parks and Personnel and LAPD, who were ready, willing, and able to immediately begin fingerprinting the greater than, I think, 600, is that the right, 600 volunteers and docents. What we found, colleagues, was that DOJ required, Department of Justice required, that the entity who would be reviewing this be actually the zoo, and so that they would have to oversee this and be the ones, and they had to get some approvals. So, if we could just briefly, so I can get you back to work, because I know you've been here a couple hours, give us an idea of the timing of this, how it's going to operate, so we can all be comfortable about ensuring that this is going to help and move forward on expeditious manner.
Yes, Pete Echovaria from the City Attorney's Office. The initial step is obviously the action that you take today, giving the instructions that we, that our office proceed and prepare the necessary resolution or ordinance, so that the Department of Justice is satisfied that we're doing this as required by state law, and they can then include the zoo as one of the recipient entities for this type of information. We have begun that process, and we will get back to you, well, we'll finish our preparation of it in about a week's time or so.
And we're going to come back to council directly.
Correct.
I'm assuming Mr. Labange will agree, waive it out of any committee, to come forward quickly to the full city council.
It's my understanding that's the intent of the action today, the recommendation today. So, we'll bring that back to the council. Once that is done, then we can contact DOJ. They can finalize the agreement to include the zoo for this type of information, and then the zoo can begin processing. That, that part of it will take a bit longer, and I don't know that they have, and they may have, a better idea than I do as to when the actual fingerprinting will begin.
Yes, John Lewis, general manager at the zoo. The timing on the actual fingerprinting is dependent, the other part of this action today is to give us authority to reassign a position that we have that's vacant to specifically administer this program. So, once we have that authority, we'll make that hiring, get that person started to set up the files, the procedures, the protocols, and we can start that probably within six weeks, six to eight weeks. That includes the hiring process, so everything, hiring, setting up the system, so running concurrent with that should be the DOJ authority, and we can start as soon as we get all those things in place.
And you're beginning, begin with the docents, volunteers, and so forth, and then the next step, we're looking at concessionaires and...
We're going to look at all the contractors at the zoo through Glaza, yes.
And colleagues, we're, we're doing this, and again, the reason I highlight it is to make the, our citizenry feel comfortable with all of the steps we're taking, not only in here at the zoo, but we do with Wreckin' Park staff, other contractors that are located providing services to children in the city of Los Angeles, and this helps us, I guess, dot all the i's and cross the t's to make sure that we have it done as well at the zoo. So, appreciate your response, John, from the zoo, because you have been, as I have, anxious and staffed to, to get this going, to move forward, and coming to my committee each week to give me a status report on where we are and with the CAO and City Attorney to push this through. Again, if there are any challenges you find in the Department of Justice, as I said, please let us know, so we can help as well put some pressure on them to expedite this approval to allow the zoo to conduct these live scan fingerprintings that occur. So, colleagues, thank you again. Thank you for being here this morning, and we look forward to it coming back expeditiously. I know Councilmember Padilla will help us schedule it quickly to get the resolutions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, and thank all of you. Peter, as always, thank you. I wanted to just ask, how many volunteers do we have at Glaza?
Well, we have 600 docents, which are the ones that are specifically trained to teach and handle kids, but we have about 1,000 total. So, we're starting with the docents, and then we'll work our way up.
Good. And I just want to, as you do it, thank them. Thank them for their service to volunteer for the children of Los Angeles, for the city of Los Angeles, and for the Los Angeles Zoo. And as I'm sure, if they could speak today, they'd want you to say a little about this storm that took place. Any problems with the animals out there?
No, we had two minor incidences, one involving mud and a couple of trees, but fortunately, none of them did any significant damage. Staff's working to clean it up right now.
All right, good. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank all of you. Thank you, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved, and we'll see you back here real soon. Next item, please.
Item 41, called special by Councilmember Perry, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. I introduced this substitute motion upon advice from the City Attorney, who recommended that we add some language about the pending summary judgment. And for those of you who are familiar, this is the situation at 69th and Main with a 20-year-plus history of serious, serious, serious problems within the community, and we are attempting to set up a mechanism to provide emergency relocation assistance for all tenants who qualify at 69th and Main. This language has been reviewed by the Housing Department as well, and I would ask for support on this, and hopefully, it would be unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for your, obviously, quick action on this. And we know that in many of our districts, this happens, and I think one of the most important things about turning this around is making sure that we have the City Attorney determinations. Ms. Perry's motion will achieve that, and I just want to underscore to the City Attorney's Office how important it is for these people that are out there who are waiting in Ms. Perry's district to be able to get that determination as quickly as possible. So, we implore them to do that, and in future cases too. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 45, called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. Mr. President, the President of the United States, signed a bill that Congress passed unanimously to allow all Americans to donate to tsunami relief program through the end of this month to help out the challenges faced in another part of the world. And this morning, as we spoke about our problems, and although there was some fatalities in our situation here in Los Angeles and situation in other counties, near not the challenges that they had faced in South Asia with the tsunami. This would just call on all to, if they can, and so many Americans have, contributed to the tsunami relief fund of their choice, be it the American Red Cross International Relief, or UNICEF, or some other organization of their choice, but they would get a tax credit for the 2004 year, a measure that our president and Congress passed to call on all Americans. I just wanted to draw to our attention, because the people of Los Angeles are great contributors, and remind them, and this action would then go to further to inform others, including our community groups that are involved with the city of Los Angeles, the neighborhood councils, the opportunity to contribute to the effort. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Item 45, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Wednesday, January 12th, to arrive at 10:45, and Wednesday, January 26th, to arrive at 11:30. Those are both for city business and meet council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Miskowski requests to be excused Friday, February 18th for personal business, and Wednesday, February 23rd, to arrive at 11:00 AM for city business. Those both meet council policy.
Ms. Miskowski is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, January 21st, to leave at 12:30, Tuesday, January 25th, and Wednesday, January 26th, to arrive at 11:00 AM. Those are all for city business and meet council policy.
Excuses are granted.
And Councilmember Labange requests to arrive late tomorrow, January 12th, for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Mr. Labange is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, it's the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Ms. Perry?
Yes, I wanted to announce that everyone is invited to an anti-predatory lending presentation brought to you by myself, Councilwoman Jan Perry, and Fannie Mae, and it will talk about what predatory lending is, what are the most common fraudulent practices, and how to protect yourself against home repair fraud. That will be on Wednesday, January 12th, from 12:30 to 2:30 PM at the Estelle Van Meter Center, 606 East 76th Street. And if you're interested, the phone number is (213) 271-2610. Thank you.
Other announcements? Mr. Labange?
For all council members and their staffs, at 3:00 this afternoon in the board office, there's a meeting to discuss efforts to, with the schoolchildren of Los Angeles, to raise money through the schoolchildren, which would then go to help the victims of the tsunami, LA Unified School District Board members this afternoon at 3:00, if any of your staffs could attend. I will have a staff member attend, and if you, and share the information as well. Thank you.
Ms. Zine?
Mr. President, Angel Reyes' birthday is today. Councilman Ed Reyes' son, and I think it's appropriate that we sing him happy birthday today. You ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Angel. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Serenaded by the City Council of the City of Angels.
That's right, the angel of the city of angels. All right.
Other announcements? Colleagues? Okay, if there's no further announcements, do we have adjournment motions today? Please rise for adjournment motions. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I asked today that we adjourn council in memory of Jeffrey Lynn Earwood, who is 42 years old, maybe 43. We heard about him earlier today. He was a homeless individual who lived in Allegiant Park, and on Sunday was crushed under hundreds of pounds of mud during a mudslide in Allegiant Park. And despite a quick response by our emergency teams that were able to dig him out, in about 10 minutes, he died on scene. He was living in the 1700 block of Stadium Way in Echo Park, in a tent with another individual, a friend of his, who was also homeless in the area. As we all went through much fear and panic in the last few days, just imagine what it was like to do that without any home over your head at all. May he rest in peace.
Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. It's with great sadness that I acknowledge and adjourn in honor of Thomas John Curry, who was born in Newburgh, New York, on March 7th, 1934. He passed away on January 3rd, 2005. His mother was Florence Mae Marr, and his father was George John Curry. Tom had three sisters in marriage, Lorraine, Dolores, and Bunny, and Tom's mother and father were divorced soon after she married Leo Berry. Tom always referred to him as dad, and said he was the only dad he had ever had. Through his marriage, Tom gained one more sister, Leah, and two brothers, Leo and Jeff. Tom graduated from high school in June 1952 and joined the Air Force in January of 1953. He ended his first four-year stint in the Air Force in January of 1957, and re-enlisted in February of 1958 for another four years, being honorably discharged in February of 1962. During his service, he received many honors. He received the National Defense Service Medal, the United Nations Service Medal, the Good Conduct Medal twice, and the Korean Service Medal, the Air Force Longevity Service Award, and had top-secret clearance while working in the communication hot room. Tom then worked as a machinist for many years and became an inspector in the metrology lab at Superior Thread Rolling Company. He had married twice when he met Virginia Ginny Curry, who is a close friend of not only mine, and her husband was, but so many of us in the Sanlito Hanga area. She was recently the president of the Chamber of Commerce of Sanlito Hanga, and works at Tierra del Sol, which many of you I know are familiar with in my district. He married her in December of 1993 while taking line dancing lessons at the Elk Lodge in Sanlito Hanga, and they married in September of 2002. Tom was forced to retire in April of 2004 after losing his driving privileges due to a torn retina in his left eye. While repairing a pathway on August 3rd of 2004, he rolled his lawn tractor over on himself. Unfortunately, in at Holy Cross Hospital Trauma Center, they did CT scans and X-rays looking for broken bones, and unfortunately, instead, found cancerous lesions in his liver. This started a new episode in Ginny and Tom's life. Through many tests, he was diagnosed with colorectal cancer that had advanced to his liver, and after receiving chemotherapy in September, it appeared that the tumor and liver lesions had begun shrinking immediately, and there was a lot of hope by all of us that he would get better and beat the cancer. He held up quite well through all of this, and he mastered the Rubik's Cues, four of them, and was studying Spanish with the help of a computer program. He's always managed to keep himself busy around his shadow hills, property, sprinkler systems, platforms for golden retrievers, weed whacking, tree trimming, and some many other things. He had a magnetic personality. Kids would just gravitate to him, as well as politicians, I have to say. He had such a way of being childlike and was so patient and understanding. Unfortunately, Tom experienced an aneurysm that took his life quickly on January 20th, excuse me, January 3rd, and was particularly shocked to all of us, especially his wife of 11 years. Though she is grateful for the time she was able to spend with him, full of so much happiness, whether they're off on a cruise or enjoying Sam's town in Las Vegas, or working together at home on a project. Ginny held him when he passed away, so she's really been strong about this, and we'll miss you, Tom.
Mr. Labange?
Members, I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Dr. Russell Boxley, who's the husband of June Andrade, one of the greatest city employees. Dr. Boxley and June have one daughter, Amanda. Ask, we adjourn in memory of Dr. Russell Boxley.
Ms. Miskowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have the council adjourn in memory of Harold Waterhouse, who was a longtime Pacific Palisade resident. He died last week at the age of 94. He had lived in the Palisades since 1947, when he built a house on a street called Wildamar, and just two weeks ago, he and his wife had moved out of their home to a nursing home, where he succumbed after two weeks there. He was really a spark and a spirit in Pacific Palisades, becoming active really after he retired and into his 70s and 80s, doing incredible things for a man of that age. He was, in 1993, named Citizen of the Year in the Pacific Palisades for helping to preserve vistas on the Sunset Boulevard scenic corridor. And as you know, Sunset, throughout the city, but particularly at its western end, as you're swerving around the curves, you just have incredible ocean views, and it's a real treasure for everyone in the city of Los Angeles, and he helped spearhead something there to preserve those view sheds. He took a derelict piece of land that was owned by the state of California called Los Leones, and helped spur development of a nature center there and others. And he also, if he ever saw something that he thought was wrong, he dealt with it. He was concerned, as we were just talking this morning about, storm drains... He was concerned, as we were just talking this morning, about storm drains, and we had a storm drain in the Pacific Palisades that was a very large intake and inlet, and the gate was broken. And he walked into the inlet, and first he wanted the local papers reported to be there to show a picture of him walking in, and then walked about a mile to the outlet at the other end, which is at the ocean side, where there was a rusty old gate, and he couldn't get out. So, he walked back through it again, just with a white pole to show him where he was in the storm drain, but he wanted to show and demonstrate how dangerous this was for children who could get in there and get lost. And he said his wife worried about him because he went into this without his flashlight, but he thought he could find his way. Recently, he published 119-page book called Sensing Omega: Voyaging to the Afterlife. And both his minister and others said it was an incredibly admirable distillation of years of reading, studying, and probing the not-so-easy-to-understand message of the French philosopher Peter Théophile de Chardin. And Harold was tireless in anything he pursued. Perhaps the thing he was most active in in this last decade or two was nuclear, preventing nuclear proliferation. And he would write to the president, write to everyone else, heads of country throughout the world, to say that we needed to take care of the nuclear proliferation, particularly in the aftermath of the fall of the Soviet Union, where we had a lot of weaponry out there that he thought we should just go and buy it all and destroy it, and that would be the safest way to deal with it. But he is and has been an incredible treasure in Pacific Palisades and will be very, very missed.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just have two. The first is in memory of Delvon Lamont Griffin, who was born August 30th, 1985, and passed away on December 12th, 2004. He was the son of Derek DeAndre Griffin and Pauline Lowry, first of four siblings. He received his education from El Camino College in the field of architecture. He enjoyed playing basketball and baseball and played at La Salle Elementary School with his friends. He worshiped at Pebbles Baptist Church under the pastorship of Reverend C.A. Irvin and enjoyed watching movies, playing games, and playing basketball, and especially enjoying his favorite dish, macaroni and cheese. His favorite team was the Chicago Bulls, favorite player, Michael Jordan. He was shy, quiet, and kept to himself, leaving behind his girlfriend, Antonia Henson, father, Derek, grandmother, Jennifer Griffin, and great-grandmother, Dorothy Harris, brother, Dale, sisters, Brianna, Jasmine, and a host of aunts and uncles and cousins, and he will be missed. The second adjourned motion I would like to do is in memory of Dorothy Eileen Yellen, who died Thursday morning at the age of 92. She was the devoted wife, mother, grandmother, sister, aunt, friend, community role model and philanthropist. She was born March 2nd, 1912, in Pinkst, Russia-- Pinkst, Pinkst, Russia, to Rabbi Isaac and Mary Hochman. Her family moved to Chelsea, Massachusetts in 1921. She married her husband, Rabbi Isaac Yellen, in 1935, and together, they moved to Los Angeles in 1948. So, I guess that made her Rebisson Yellen. She shared her husband's devotion and commitment to Judaism and contributed unceasingly to numerous charitable organizations, such as Young Israel of Century City, Kaminet's Yeshiva and/or Elkonon in Israel. Dorothy was a role model of devotion to her family, to the community, and to her religion. Her precious values passed to her from her parents and grandparents, and she passed them on to her children. To Dorothy, her greatest achievement was to see those values embraced by her sons, Dr. Albert E. Yellen, Ira Yellen, and Dr. Mark Yellen. Their multiple achievements and those of her many grandchildren provided her with constant joy. The strength of these values enabled her to live an intellectually full life and to possess dignity, grace, and humor, and to die peacefully. She will be missed by all, and in lieu of flowers, donations should be made to Young Israel of Century City or Doctors Without Borders. And the service is Sunday at 10:00 AM at, I guess, Peace Memorial Park. Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, request we adjourn in memory of Sandra Walker James. Sandra Walker James passed away December 28th at the age of 50 in her home in Woodland Hills. She was born June 8th, 1954 in Los Angeles, where she grew up. Graduated from Cal State University, Long Beach, attended Santa Clara University. She was a union negotiator for Continental Airlines prior to receiving her teaching credential in the 80s. Taught at Los Angeles Community Magnet School for over a decade and at Woodlake Elementary School in Woodland Hills from 1997 to the time of her passing. She was active in her church, the Bryant Temple AME, and participated in many of their activities. She will be greatly missed by all who knew her. She is survived by her daughters, Leslie and Tyron James and their father, Chelsea James, her sister, Iris Fisher, her brother-in-law, Don Fisher, her stepmother, Ms. Walker, a host of nieces and nephews, and many friends and colleagues. May Sandra Walker James rest in peace.
Any other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.